Okay, it's six thirty-one. It's open, uh, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, planning board meeting. First agenda item in minutes. Questions? Let's see, what did I write on this? Oh, uh, Dave was asked to follow up with Clea on the matter. What was the matter? Area two subdivision.
Um, Dave, that was about the, um, per house, the amount of money we were giving per house.
Thank you. Now I go read back this second sentence back. Did you question?
I haven't had a chance to ask that question. I'm bogged down with decisions and other things. It is on the list. There's other things to talk to them about as well.
Okay. Uh, and that will be, um, in this, uh, week's minutes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's how we're gonna remember. Uh, move to accept.
I have, okay. I have a question.
You're gonna second it, then you can pass.
Yeah, I will second.
Okay. What is it?
Um, down to the spotted cow right at the end of page four. It says that Tim asked for the topic to be put on the agenda. Was that you for the, the old farm area, the old Schwartz farm?
Yes. Yeah, that was on Thursday at the town meeting.
What was, I was kinda busy calming down one of our spectators. And I just didn't, I wondered what that was about.
It was, that was just because I wanted to find out, um, if there was anything that we needed to do 'cause if it was a restaurant or if it was. I, I wanted to basically find out if it was a, uh, if it needed site plan review.
Oh, okay.
Or if it needed, um, uh, by right.
That's good enough for me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and the answer is it's not. The vicar's license, all that stuff's in the select boards' purview, nothing to do with us.
The other thing there, I think it said that he was using the truck because he wasn't using the restaurant. And I know it said he was going to, or he did spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
He said it was fifty thousand dollars to retrofit the restaurant to come up to code.
Right.
So the alternate was put a tr- uh, truck, food truck there and use the restaurant for people to sit in.
Oh, okay.
And then I started to go down the path and then shut up real quick.
Thank you.
Zip it.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't sure what went on there.
Yep, that was it.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Anything else regarding the minutes? We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, let's see. We've got ten minutes before a public hearing. In ours, um...
I just had a point of interest on the public hearing. I just happened to see one, forgot, I even forgot my time it was in the newspaper. And they said the hearing would start at approximately seven o'clock. That's pretty hard to have a starter on that time.
Uh, you know, I, I can say, you know, that...
I mean, it's...
That language i- is reasonable, but you can't start it before the posted time, no matter what. Start it after. So it could be not seven o'clock, it could be seven ten.
That's what the approximation's for, 'cause if it gets pushed past it.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
So you do have some engineering reports. I do have copies, paper copies here. Take a distributed outreach topic.
But we'll move to those since we have ten minutes. I think most of those are pretty simple.
Yeah, so Maple Hills first. The copies for the board decree has his. This was information also sent electronically to the board.
Yeah, you sent this out as emails, right?
That's correct.
Yep, I read this one.
Yep, I read this one.
I, I think it's kind of obvious that nothing is gonna be done Maple Hill until spring.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask Norm. It looks like this is basically the same thing as the previous report, so...
But he did fix, he did fix the slope on the, on the ramp. The cul-de-sac.
No, if you look at previously...
Pavement associated with the ramp adjacent to the cul-de-sac has been removed. The ramp has been repaved and measured in conformance to ADA.
But down as the previously noted, it still says the sidewalks are higher than the adjacent finish grade. So that still has to be fixed.
With fill, yeah.
Yeah. So he did do the ramp, okay. Do we need to, for that tree stuff, do we need to do any, to do a motion and an exception to change the, the, um...
Just spacing of the tree?
Yeah, because that's in our bylaw, are in our subdivision regs. And do we need to give a waiver for that?
Does it say approximate? In the bylaw?
I don't think so. I thought it said...
It said fifty foot right on.
Yeah.
We have not traded as a waiver before.
I'm okay with that. I just wanted to get it recorded somewhere, so if somebody comes in in two years, "My tree, it says right here fifty feet. I measured it, sixty-five."
And I did put that in the minutes from the last meeting, so it is, it is in minutes.
Wanna leave it at that? I'm fine.
Just to share, if I could, I think what would be more appropriate than a reference to the minutes in passing would be the board to take some action to make a, make a judgment on it and then have the board vote, whatever that judgment is. If you consider it to be field change, then so, and so noted. And I think we would like to capture the vote in that manner. And then with that feedback there, Carl Holgren, and have him update this correspondence.
Would Clea have to make a note, Dave, then on the drawings, as this is a field change for the asbills?
No, because the change is already in place.
Okay, Sean, let me ask.
Sean.
Okay. Well, I guess I make a motion to allow a field change at Maple Hill Estate subdivision to allow, um, tree, twelve street trees to be, um, intervalled at sixty-five feet instead of the subdivision requirement of fifty.
Second.
Is there any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
The rest of this I've, I've pretty much got a hunch, nothing is gonna happen until spring.
Guess the only thing, Norm, I, maybe this is you or Dave, is if he's gonna make the changes, don't do it April fifteenth and come in with the asbills and try to make the...
Well, if the weather stays like it is, it may get done sooner.
The paving, I don't think. I don't, I don't think it's a good idea to do the adjustments to the paving. This thing is too cold.
Julian, are the asphalt plants still open or are they closed?
They are closed.
Okay.
That's, that game's over.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Might get a special mix.
But nothing from the big?
No. No paving job, maybe patchwork.
That's what I thought. Thanks.
All right, a lot of that is weather dependent, so...
I'm good with Maple.
Okay. Still have five minutes.
Yeah, Bryce Lemon. This is a paper backup copy. I think already has his. This information was previously sent by email last week.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is the same thing, just in a holding pattern.
I did. I did visit phase three today. Still building houses like mad, but that's about the only thing that I saw happen.
Is the road still as bad as it, as Carl said, with silt all over it?
There, there is, and there's places that, uh, they cut the asphalt to put in some of the utilities and those haven't been patched yet, they're just gravel.
You gotta get the utilities in before they can do that anyhow.
Rattle my truck a little bit going over that.
All right.
Any thoughts on this?
Do you think he's gonna, he's gonna try to get phase two from May? Phase two road acceptance?
No, no.
Okay.
I was up there, took a look at phase two, then go to the phase three.
Yeah.
All right.
Phase two is basically done.
Yeah.
The, uh, well, one thing surprised me a little bit. I thought that detention pond would be included in phase two. But he says that phase four also contributes to that.
Oh, is that that little cul-de-sac that comes behind the properties?
No. Phase four is the next, is gonna be connecting phase two and phase three.
Oh, and, oh, phase five's that cul-de-sac then? Okay. Okay.
Just, just looking at the pavement on that, the last cul-de-sac on phase two. Have you really taken a hard look at it?
You mean this? You mean that?
Yeah, well, no, it's not so much that, you know. To me, it looked awful flat. There is no...
Oh, there's no crown.
No crown.
Oh, I didn't see that.
To take it to the, you know, to the catch basins.
Well...
I was looking coming off that driveway.
There's, wait a minute. But there's no catch bases in the cul-de-sac itself.
No, I'm talking about it where it joins onto the road, huh?
On the road. 'Cause those two cul-de-sacs are all the way down, those, those two catch bases, all the way, all the way to the bottom.
Yeah.
The bottom of that.
Yeah, but if there's no crown, that's just gonna go right across that guy's house on the side.
Well, it's gonna cross the road.
Yeah. 'Cause that house sits down, if I remember right, from the road.
It does. Well, no, the one right across, it's right there. Not down.
Okay.
But to me, the water, I thought, was supposed to shift to the catch basin on the upper side. Anyways, next time up to that neck of the woods, just take a look at it.
And that's phase two, right?
Yes.
Crowning the road is standard. And, you know, it's not a huge amount.
No, but when you look at it...
Yeah, that's collecting a big area up there.
Yeah. I just wanna make sure that...
He's gonna have more problems, Dick, with when it comes around the back of those houses. You know, the one that he fixed on the other side? It's gonna be the same problem coming on the other side of the road that's gonna have to fix. That's gonna be a waterfall, too. So most of the water will come behind the houses, not on the road.
Anything else on, Bryce Lemon?
No.
We got Britten now?
Let's do one more.
One more, okay. This is the next one. In Britten All Estates, Decore has his. This is previously sent, has an electronic copy, and that's the paper backup.
Oh, yeah, this is the one that has the all capitalized and, um, bolded. Weren't we gonna send Clea a letter on that? That Mike Maroney's got to oversee this engineering installation? 'Cause Mike's letter that I read that Dave passed out said he reviewed the plans and everything looked fine.
I thought there was some reference in this one, too.
Here it is, last page.
There's references that Mike, uh, will continue to be on site and do inspection of the culverts that are installed.
But that's not the letter that he sent to Carl.
No, the letter he sent for Carl is to a specific four culvert crossing at Grizzly Drive Station two and six. That's the first one. Additional correspondence in the same type of letter would be required for the second one. But he's gonna be on site, apparently according to this, doing, uh, regular inspections of the culverts that are installed.
I did take a look at, uh, at that one today. I'll tell you that retaining a wall is big and awful wrong.
Yeah, I, I, the picture that he sent, Dave, and again, I'm not a structural, is this just storage at the front of that second picture at the bottom?
I think so.
Because that ain't how it's getting constructed?
No, no.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure, 'cause I'm like, I went online to look how they put these bricks together and that ain't it. So I'm hoping that's storage. Okay, good enough. All right.
The only other thing that's not, I don't think it's, yeah...
Is this the one where he's still asking for the, uh...
Yeah, in that second paragraph before, fourth line down, it says this email appears to be related to sewer revisions that are required to accommodate conflicts resulting from the act of design. And... I think it's the sewer and water engineering doesn't fall to the planning board.
No, but should we forward, let me see, let me look at the CC.
Joe Buckley is aware of it.
But he wasn't on the, this email?
No, but he is aware of it.
Okay.
He has questions.
Okay.
He caught me on email, back to Clea.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm assuming that's, you know, just taken care of.
Should, okay.
It's not our...
But we should put it in the file, whatever the result is, into the subdivision file.
Yeah. Well, it, it needs, it certainly needs to be part of the asbills.
Yeah. Well, I just don't want the crack to get slipped through like it did with a lot of the bridge issues. It, uh, so... Okay, good enough.
I don't see anything else in there.
Nope. All right.
Okay, and we're after six forty-five, so, um... This is a public hearing, an application for a two-line common driveway by site plan review. Uh, I got a little bit confused if you sent out the decision.
Um, no, what I sent out were decisions for the special permit state lots. This is a se- this is a different matter. This is a common driveway affecting two of the lots that were previously approved as a state lot. But that decision is not for this matter. You were telling, I just said September, there was a special permit for the state lots, six, seven, and nine. So what you have is, are the decisions for those. Oh, there is commonality once again between six and seven, which are the subjects for this, uh, two-line common driveway site plan. Could I answer your question?
Boy, oh, boy, I must have read that wrong.
Yeah, I'm... So this is, I'm confused. This is site plan review and...
Estate lots. Yeah, and this is a driveway, common driveway to get to tools down. Utilizing the road that's been at a B you've used for years and years. Instead of having three driveways, you have two driveways.
No, I could, I could've sworn. No, it was... Something you just sent out.
Yeah, the one I just sent out, I sent out one from Kenwood, one thirty at Kenwood, which was a two-line common driveway site plan review. That was done on November twenty-third.
Okay.
So that's the one I sent out.
Okay. Very good, very good.
Okay. So I, I got the site plan review. I'm confused. We're doing two hearings, site plan review and common driveway?
No. It's a site plan review for a two-line common driveway.
Okay. But because the common driveway is two, it doesn't require a special permit?
Correct.
Okay, now I got it.
Yeah, I guess maybe just as a point of clarification. So the original application from the applicant was done on an outdated special permit form. We did pick that up and the advertisement reflects that it was a site plan review. I then followed up with the applicant, they submitted a new cover sheet on the site plan application form. So you do have the necessary form in front of you and it was picked up on the advertisement.
Okay. And the dotted lines on this drawing is the old gravel driveway?
Yeah, that's what's existing.
Okay, thanks. Now I get it. Sir, could you please sit down and go back to your seat?
Through the chair.
Yes, you may go.
Tell me, Norm, which way's the water run? How come the contours doesn't continue on into the lot? Does the water from that driveway come back out? Keep continuing?
Going in this way.
And then what?
And then what?
Yeah.
Well, if I'm reading the contour lines, the slopes like this.
That's an existing driveway that's, we're following the grade that we're there. That driveway's been there since, I'd say, the early sixties. But I'm just asking a question, which way is the water, does it continue or does it drop off? It goes, it goes down to the bottom of the hill, there's a low area, and it sheds off the driveway the way it's been flowing. So where the houses are gonna be, it's gonna be coming back? Oh, it goes uphill there. No, it goes up, it goes down, and it comes back up.
So there's like a little valley right at the end?
Yeah.
All right, that's fine.
And then it breaks, right, when you get past the stone wall, it breaks off to the different directions.
I don't have an issue with that.
I have no issue with it, just the fact, I just wanted to know which way the water was running. I didn't wanna continue running towards the house. Yep.
Now, the question, I, God, it's three forty-three. Doing my math real quick to make sure we're not over five hundred.
Yeah, I think it says in the application something like three seventy.
Okay.
Where it splits off.
The split off is where it becomes a non-common driveway?
Yep.
Okay.
And there's a sign right there to show house numbers, which way to go.
Yeah, that, even if it's split off, that's not a hundred and twenty feet, so I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
No, I don't see anything. The fifty feet is on... So the only, during the only confusing, oh. So lot seven actually has...
He's been over.
It's got a fifty-foot access point for the common, I'm sorry, for the estate lot that's not being used for a driveway, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I was trying to put two and two together. That's an interesting, okay.
But the only note I have is on the homeowner's agreement. Making, on the driveway. This is not the normal one that we've seen so many of.
I didn't write that up, so that was... Homeowners, attorney, or whoever.
It's not a copy of the one that was commonly been seen. Uh, I looked it over, you know, and again, my, my biggest concern on this is that the town is not held to any requirements or, you know, liability and that sort of thing. And that is in here. However...
This is number six.
In item number one.
Yep.
On the third line down, in number one.
Says Truesberry.
Yes. It's probably the common use of the town as Truesberry.
That's gotta be fixed.
So I...
We can't accept it until it's fixed.
Which...
Okay, I crossed it out in Ray Franklin.
Considering this was notarized by some guy from Florida.
Well, actually, PEs in Florida and California are hard to get. They're the two toughest states in the Union. Well, the other thing is that since this has already been recorded, shouldn't the plan and book be already in there since we brought this?
It does not say it's been recorded.
No, this is...
No, no, I meant, I meant under section one. Showing on the plan. Oh, this plan that we're gonna, this hasn't been signed? This site plan, common driveway? 'Cause isn't...
An easement plan will be done, it's an ADX plan, it doesn't need your signature. Show the easement as shown on this plan will be part of the deed of the property once this is approved.
Yeah, I just have a prob norm of signing this with XXs in a legal document.
Well, we don't sign this. There's no place we can sign this.
I thought we, so don't we approve homeowners agreements? Am I wrong? How do we?
It, it's part of our approval process that the homeowners agreement is, is acceptable.
There is one. It's in it.
In acceptable.
Okay.
That Truesberry thing kinda makes it non-acceptable, but...
Yeah.
We're not gonna send a decision on this.
Until it's corrected?
Yeah, until...
Okay.
Certainly not at this meeting. We don't have a decision.
Carter, if I get you a revised set of Brooklyn, you'll be out.
And, and I don't know, I don't know if anybody else has read through the whole document, but it is, a lot of it is jibber-jabber. The most important thing is numbers five and six. At least for me.
Read.
Actually, it's, it's pretty detailed. When you're talking about anything more than three inches of snow has to be removed.
Oh, I can see it now in the future.
So I've always wondered about these, Norman, and maybe it's a question for KP. It's like, this last line, um, on three, I'm sorry, it's just before the A, B, and C on three. Repairs, no, I'm sorry, it's on two. The lot owners will thereupon be obligated to fund such maintenance repairs as provided herein. So what if they don't? Is that their problem?
That's their problem, it's not your problem.
So the town doesn't have any worries about that?
That's what Norm said.
Okay, 'cause I saw it up here. It says the town has no liability, I like that, but I just...
Confuse civil court.
Okay, is that what it is? All right, good enough. I had this...
Driveways.
Yeah. That's what scared the heck out of me with Mr. Helly on, uh, who were gonna buy that house up there is what's gonna happen with a common driveway? I've never had that before.
Yeah, along with De Nevis.
Yeah, he's a good man, so, all right, I'm fine with this.
So does anybody have any problems, comments, or anything? On the application to the common driveway?
Okay, good, it's countersigned by notary in Massachusetts, that's the only thing we have here. No, but Mass back here, there's a Massachusetts notary also signed this. So, 'cause I was gonna say, it's not legitimate in Mass, signed by somebody in Florida. So there's a countersigner, I'm good with that. Okay. Do we need to vote?
We could vote to grant site plan approval.
Guess I make a motion to grant site plan approval.
Excuse me, I hate to interrupt, but first the hearing has to be closed.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, you're right, thanks.
We don't need the easement paperwork. See, that's coming later. To have that line in there.
It has to go in the deed.
Okay. But that doesn't have to be before.
I guess motion to close the hearing?
Not to continue till he gets it back to us?
I was gonna put in the motion to accept that it was contingent upon homeowners agreement being modified and returned, so, I don't know if that's okay with the board.
Be okay with me.
Sounds good.
'Cause we have to sign the decision and we won't sign it until we get that homeowners agreement back. That's, that's what I was thinking. At least we could get it out of the way.
If you say so.
You're scaring me, giving me that look that I used to get from my dad when I'm forgetting something and he's gonna remind me and I'm gonna have to fix it. And usually it's gonna take a lot of hours. And usually had something to do with a sixty-nine Chevy that I forgot to do something on.
No, I, I...
Bleed the brakes.
I don't have a problem, I just don't want something to slip by.
This is a big deal, to be pretty honest with you, I have no idea whether that would invalidate... This is a big deal, to be pretty honest with you, I have no idea whether that would invalidate that agreement or not.
Well, the only reason it's gotta be redone...
It is intended for, but we'll have it fixed.
Yeah, the only reason we gotta have it redone, Norm, is cause all these notaries are gonna have to re-stamp it and redo everything and that'll make it legal then when they put it in, so... And that would have to go to Dave, I'm guessing. So when we get, when we sign off on the decision, the latest and greatest would be included with it.
Well, that's right.
Yeah, I'll get that, I'll call them tomorrow, I didn't realize that, I didn't do that, we just attached it.
Okay, I have a motion to close the hearing.
All right, so moved.
What time, what?
You give me the motion.
You did, did you?
Yeah, sorry.
I need a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
What time is it?
Seven oh one. Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, now I'll make a motion to approve the site plan review for, um, eighty-five, no. I'm sorry, Turkey Hill Road? Doesn't have an address. For site plan for common driveway located on Turkey Hill Road, um...
Lot six and seven.
Lot six and seven, um, how do I wanna word that? With exception... Oh, and, yeah, okay. On the condition that, uh, the homeowners, I'm sorry, the driveway, common driveway declaration, uh, I'm sorry, declaration of common driveway is updated. Um, as part of the s- decision.
Still moved.
Make him name the motion. That was his motion.
Quick move the motion, right?
Second.
Got that, okay.
Is there any discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Should be in, in and out, baby.
That's good. Been a while since I've been, this is like, this is the first time I've seen you guys.
I know.
Yeah.
What's going on, there's, there's five and six hundred thousand dollar houses being built, you gotta get in on that action.
You look a little older, actually.
I know, isn't that? It's a sad thing.
I just saw on Facebook that Jimmy's tapping out.
He's, uh, he's had it off for the game.
Yeah, just a couple every year and that's it?
Game over.
Yeah, Jimmy's tapping out, so I'll just leave Cle and Independence.
Thank you very much, we'll see you soon.
Two. So what do we got left, Bear Hill?
Bear Hill two, consulting report. This is gonna have to tend to that, if the guy's in the ready, just paper back up, electronic, set lots with.
This is a tough one.
Yeah. Is, is, uh, Director Buckley coming in for this DPW report for fifty-six? I'm kidding, I'm just being... Uh-oh, I got that dick look again.
Boy, you're really, uh, keep it up.
Yeah. This happened a little. This is the one where, did we send a letter to Cle last time asking him to please get the, the camera inspection reports to the, to the director? And also to get the inserts in, I thought we did.
I thought so too.
It was more of a reminder letter to him.
Yeah. They were working up there today. Not exactly what they did, but they, they had, they had dug up for all the manholes in the road. Square holes cut around those, those were all hatched back up again. And, uh, they, they still have trouble with some guys up there doing something. It could very well be that they're trying to do it to the... However, there is nothing else happening up there.
They're not gonna put asphalt, they're, any more cleanup work up there for the rest of the year for houses, right? Think?
Well...
Cause he's gotta go around and come out on the other side.
No, the road is all in all the way around.
I missed it then.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, it's all paved.
Oh, I missed it, last time I was up there, it was just basically, uh, half of the road was paved, I didn't see the other half. Okay.
Paved right through.
Yeah, I'm gonna take a road trip.
Like I said, the thing, the thing is, you know, he can't, he can't sell any houses up there until the access of Brittle Estates is in. And it's pretty much appearing that that's not gonna happen until spring. Well, certainly can't pave Brittle Estates at this point. And, uh, I guess Glenn Coppola has been doing some work over there for him. And he says he doesn't even think that they're gonna be moving that fill from the other side of the hill on there until spring.
Wow.
Okay.
Aside that, we still haven't got our money yet.
So, do we still need to send him a reminder, cause to Dick's point, I don't want this slipping through the cracks with this camera inspection? Cause the longer we wait, the more that film goes somewhere.
Didn't they say that they found a problem, but it wasn't the sewer line, it was something else?
Yeah, it was...
The kinked, or...
If the clarkings or something, they, they thought there was a bend in the pipe that it couldn't get by, but it wasn't.
Yeah, there's something...
Those things are only, it's tough to get stuck in a, what's standard sewer pipe, six, eight inches?
Eight and six.
Probably six and a half, yeah.
With the fiber optic thing about...
Yeah.
Half an inch, I'm struggling with getting stuck.
I think that thing's on wheels.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, I think it's a little cart on wheels.
Oh, okay. I'm used to seeing that, we used to do inspection, looks basically like the endoscopic guys use, we put it down there. It's armored cable, so it's stiff, and you just basically unwind it and push it through the pipe. Okay.
Well, we could, we could, uh, just say, let's just send a note referencing December tenth.
And I'm, Norm, I'm okay just an email reminder. Attach this and say, I don't think Dave, you need to write a big formal letter, just Cle.
I can buy that.
You know, see the bolded sections, we'd like these cleared.
Yeah, I think we could do that, I, um, saw an email from Blair to, to Quinn asking that these correspondences be sent to Tom Larson as well. So perhaps I can send this both to Tom Larson and Cle, cause I think what is not totally clear is who's exactly running the project on a day-to-day basis.
Oh, we sent it to Cle and if he forgets to forward it to Tom, nothing gets done.
So I think that might be a useful thing that he recommended, that the consulting reports go to Tom Larson, that I would just follow suit and we'll see what kind of a result we get there.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay, anything else on Bear Hill two? Okay, uh, Route fifty-six, overwork, DPW filing, um...
Excuse me, I don't know if you want the cover sheets for the report for reference to document memories?
Yeah, I suppose.
I have. No documentation at all?
I'll take whatever you gotta do.
So this is just a cover sheet, I know I can't explain it in further detail, but that's the cover sheet, a hundred fifty-three page document that was sent as an email associated with this matter, that was sent last week.
Can I see one?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't get the Quinn either.
Oh, Bear Hill two?
Yeah. Maybe you didn't see me walk in?
You've been so quiet.
Yep.
Speak up.
So, is this, Norm, for a different project than what they're doing on fifty-six? Or is this the big one?
This is a waterway license?
Yeah, this is because they're gonna be redoing the dam.
Oh, as part of the...
As part of...
Oh, okay.
And, I don't know, the, the bottom line is, I've already forgotten what the heck it was they signed.
Right, so...
There was some, there was some form in there that the planning board needed to say that it was okay.
I can add to that, actually, the form was even more simpler than that. The form that you signed on behalf of the planning board was to acknowledge receipt of this document that was in. The board's not making any decisions on this, it's just to acknowledge receipt of this document.
So Ron will be sending me a hundred and thirty-four page report? I'm kidding, which is hot.
Who owns the dam?
Bingo.
Last I knew, it was Blair.
Bingo. Not the town, it was Blair that owned this thing.
Blair owns the dam, I know that for a fact.
But yet they're saying, no, it's the town.
No, the Blair owns the dam.
Tell me about it, for crying sake, so what the heck is going on with this thing?
I don't understand how, I'm sorry, I'm...
Oh, boy, you get me started, all right, that did it.
The town doesn't own that dam.
So, let me ask you a question then. And I'll be quiet, cause I have no...
That's all right.
I say I know that for a fact, I'm not a lawyer or whatever, but...
Is that, chapter ninety-one refers to town property, so if Mr. Blair owns the dam, I don't see how the town should be using their money to repair it.
Correct.
Like I, I told, there was, there was some DCR woman there, for crying out loud, and, and DEP, and there was another woman there, this is back several years ago, Gary was here.
Yeah.
And, uh, I, I says, all the years, for crying out loud, Blair said it was his dam, his dam, when he bought the property, Clarkins, Clarkins had a nice house and it was Blair's.
Well, he even owned the water rights, right?
And I swear, if I had, if I had the money, for crying out loud, I would've hired a, a surveyor to come in to double check, just to make sure.
You know, this is, this is the, this is the whole thing, you know? Blair says he owns the dam. Does Blair ever lie?
Has the town ever lied?
Yeah.
Yes, so...
Has the town ever lied?
Well, let me ask a simple question, they have this thing called title search companies.
Yeah.
We have an assessor that can easily access that, that service and find out who owns the dam.
If the boards in the dam are white oak, I was the last person to repair that dam, cause I replaced all the boards in that dam, I drained that pond with his permission. We took the boards out, we drained it, we tried to, I was living on the pond for years. I was this far away from buying, cause the man's on the right side, Blair owns the left side of the pond. I had to go through him to be able to replace and repair, because the water was so low, it was leaking and it was caused, you know what I mean? Wanted to have the water level high. So I just didn't know, I didn't, again, I've been wondering about that and about the whole...
I just have to be kinda curious. What is the width of the right-of-way of Route fifty-six?
Lighter than normal.
Uh, I, I know this question.
It's wider than normal, but still...
It's a right-of-way, not ownership.
But it, but the road is not in the center of the right-of-way on fifty-six.
That's possible.
Cause I, um, get, or Gary, um, Chief Buckley's already had this issue with my neighbor that, uh, the fifty-six where it turns right by Sassuwanna, there's more right-of-way on the Britanelle side than there is on the Sassuwanna side. So when trees fell, it was literally on the owner's property, which would typically be in the right-of-way, but because the right-of-way was two feet, not ten feet, on, just because the road of fifty-six had been moved over on that dirt, um, Director Buckley had to say, it's not my, it's not my tree. But that's an example of fifty-six being...
Yeah, I can see that.
All over the place, and I guess it was corrected back in the fifties or sixties, cause there was some, fifty-six or had some turn to it and back then they, uh, Director Buckley had found some documentation where the road had been, what's the word I'm looking for? Evened out or moved or something like that?
It was upgraded, that's not the original condition of the road.
It wasn't, same was done by Campbell Street, way back when.
So going back to the beginning of this project, and I don't know if anybody here can even answer the question, was Mr. Blair approached to say, hey, we need to do something here, this is yours, you, you gotta fix it? Isn't that what happened in Holden and Eagle, I'm just curious, if he said, no, I don't own it? How did this all even come up and maybe it's way after?
Gary probably told him, you know, we'll take it over, good.
Way too far down the road now, but I, just, so I'm just curious.
My question was either way, approach that, I mean, is, is it our business?
It's not our business. That's exactly it.
Hence, that's why I've been asking for another public hearing, from Mr. Buckley.
So like we ask all the time, whose business is it, like who, who made this decision? Which board do we know?
DPW?
Would fall to, well, DPW actually would fall to the select board.
Select board.
Do they know that they might not own the dam?
They probably don't care.
Yeah.
Leah?
Yeah.
Is Leah on?
Leah, Leah's here, hey, we need you to make this...
Maybe she's getting some fish, she is.
We need to make, just make a decision, yes or no, and we're good. I'm joking.
I don't know the details of it all, I think this has been going on since even before I was on the board and I thought it should all been figured out, maybe with Margaret and everything, so, um, I'll have to look into it, I honestly don't know, sorry, guys.
No, wouldn't expect her to have the answer.
Did we get grant money for this?
I think it's chapter ninety-one, if I'm reading this right.
You think it's chapter ninety-one?
That's...
Ninety money, they're also using for buying the right-of-ways.
Oh, that's on, on fifty-six?
On fifty-six.
Okay.
So Leah, if you do, uh, find out anything about it, could you forward that information to us?
Yeah, definitely, um, do you want me to forward it to you, Norm, and Dave, both of you? Um, the whole board, how, what, what's your, I don't have a preference, whatever works for you guys.
Yeah, you can forward it to Dave, you can forward it to us.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Cause the question I had on this is, it says waterway license. What does that mean, does that mean that this documents for taking over the dam? Even though it says below it, it says rehabilitation, I read this, it says, application for chapter ninety-one, waterway license. And that's the title, and then BR, and then this is project numbers in quotation C. So this to me tells me that it's some type of document that's taking over the dam, is that what this is for?
No, it's, it's...
Dave, help me out here.
Sure, so, the, th- this is a state project.
Yep.
Because of the state project associated with Route fifty-six modification. The town is required to, uh, fill out this application. The DPW is taking the lead on filling out this application. Uh, doc, uh, paperwork from the state went to, there were various forms of paperwork from the state, one of which was for the planning board to merely, simply, and only, do nothing else but acknowledge, receive this document. There's no decision that the planning board has to make, the planning board is not being asked to review this. It was simply a state form acknowledging, having the planning board acknowledge that they received this. That is pretty much the extent of it, the DPW director is otherwise taking the lead on this application. This is associated with the Route fifty-six runway approvals, as far as I understand it.
Is Director Buckley already scheduled at the next meeting by any chance, sir? I mean, I would hate to pull him in, I'm just curious if he'd come in for some questions and, I mean, I don't know if it doesn't concern us, I guess maybe it doesn't concern us.
No, to Kevin's point, I'm sort of, when I acknowledge a document, that means I'm responsible for it.
But actually, no, that's not the case, Norm, you read the...
We didn't, no, just received it, that's all.
Yeah, just received it.
Didn't say we read it.
We're not agreeing to, we just, we got a piece of paper, right? Now, but if we get this, do we get details of all that as well?
Yes, I sent electronically last week, the entire document, there's a hundred fifty-three pages. So as not to do unnecessary copying of the document, I'm only providing this as a reminder for discussion only.
I didn't, I didn't see it either, well...
If board members would like to pay a copy, we certainly...
No, we don't need that.
All right, so, what is classified as the dam?
I don't know.
The whole road where, both sides of the road?
No, I think it was just, I read part of this board that day, I guess. Anyway, I read a few pages, I read far enough to figure out what the heck they were talking about. It is, I remember it was talking about just the side of the road where the dam is.
Where the dam is?
Now that...
Not, not the road, the road is not the dam itself?
It's in the planning board agenda documents.
Here he comes.
At the bottom, chapter ninety-one.
Pay no attention to the man.
PDF, I couldn't find it until I looked, it was on, uh...
Anyways, what I'm getting at, you know who owns the other side of the road? The banking? DCR. Not the town of Robin, DCR owns it.
You know, the one?
No, no, no.
December ninth.
The banking.
Across the road.
Because way back when they used to have coming down M W R A, the aqueduct underneath goes underneath multiple pond. But the power lines that came from that, from the Quavon Dam, uh, generator to West Oilston had to zigzag because they couldn't put the wi- wires, you know, over the water. So they owned that banking. And got it onto the other side and then made it over to the railroad and, and then over onto their property. Where it intersected with the aqueduct underneath.
You seem to have a visitor here.
Yes. FICOM must know everything about this dam.
Well, I'm going to do this from, from memory, which is a very, very bad choice. Because my memory is rotten. But as I recall, and we do have a ton of paperwork on this, this is merely the replacement of the dam and the spillway and reconstruction of them. That's all this project is. All the work for the road is now in a separate project. That they're being sort of in a way, kind of combined from an, from a project management point of view. Uh, it is, I.
Oh, yeah, it says.
I don't remember that the spillway extends under the, under the road. I know that the waterway continues under the road and goes on. I don't believe, I, there's very minimal work on the uh, west side of the road. Very minimal work.
Yeah, it was in the.
There is a bunch of work obviously on the east side of the road where they're.
You had that bottom one right there.
Completely reconstructing the spillway, which is inadequate.
Correct. So Peter, it looks like, if I read this of the hundred and thirty-four pages, it looks like they're replacing the entire spillway because its capacity doesn't meet code.
Does, does it meet code going underneath the house?
Oh, actually, wait a minute, let me think about this.
It says the spillway does not have.
That is, that is not germane to this project at all. Uh, so yeah, I was wrong, 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 because they have to close the road when they put in the culverts. So it's, it's the dam and the spillway which includes culverts and resurfacing and, and doing the road, which is why they're including it with the rest of that first tip project.
Yeah, because it's, it's talking about proposed reinforced concrete spillway and then culverts, reinforced concretes.
And, and so yes, it does extend, I'm going to pick a number, six feet beyond the edge of the roadway.
Which is the earthen embankment repairs that they're talking about here too.
That's exactly correct. But they do absolutely nothing downstream. This project does nothing downstream of that.
Yep, that's where it ends, is at the earthen bank. The earthen embankment repairs is where, um, that's it. And then it goes on to talk about the road segment that'll be covered under.
Right. Now, what, it'll be really interesting because the roadway is going to rise. I don't remember how much. And, but again, it's more reason to include that along with all the other tip work up from Maine up to Richards, I think.
It is. And in this report, they also included alternates, like relocating the dam. But these are analysis, not solutions. They're just analysis.
Yeah, the one, the one analysis they never put in is removing the dam. And we asked them to.
And I asked also D C I, you know, any statistics on draining that pond? And she never got back to me on that.
It's not that deep.
It's the question of what, what do you have for fish, you know, wildlife? When you drain the pond out, what are you going to do with what's left? Is there an area, you only can drain it down X number of feet and have to leave X number, uh, you know, feet of water in the back there for the survival of the fish? Or what? You know, and that's what I want to know. When you start working on this dam, how low are you bringing the water down?
It's not that deep at the, you know.
But they're not going to do that, so.
Right. I'm not sure if they're building a coffer to hold back the water during construction.
Oh, the old, uh, Oak Island, uh.
Yeah, there's, there's happening some. But actually, I, again, from memory, their response, the engineer's response to considering removing the dam was that's a very bad idea because the pond acts as a buffer for large water, for large rain events. And if that wasn't, if the dam wasn't there.
It'd wash out.
All the water would wash downstream and it would be catastrophic downstream. Now, a failed dam is also catastrophic downstream, so. But it's hardly the same frequency.
It's away from you and I's house, we're good with that.
Yeah. Well, the back's up too far.
It will be in too.
You could.
Yeah.
Joe Delacollup and a butter to the pond.
He will understand the water problem.
He knows. He, that's, he was one of the people in favor of removing the dam completely.
I see shaft five two in here.
Yeah.
This locust. All right, that's it, that's enough.
The idea is let, let Leah see if she can find out what it is.
Like I say, I, I think we should have a public hearing. All these people with the right aways and everything else that they got questions.
The states, the states held them, only they were.
Private public hearings.
Yes, that's a very good way to say it.
Well, they were online too, if I'm not mistaken.
That's what I mean.
They were online after the fact.
Yes.
There was no possibility of public interaction, which is why they were private public hearings as Norm described them. It was.
Here, we've already told you what you're getting. Go to this website and view it.
Yeah.
Yep, here's the project.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and by the way, I did watch one of them and it, it had no, no audio for significant parts of time.
Well, it was almost like a PowerPoint presentation. It really wasn't technical going into.
No, this is the recording of the meeting.
Oh, okay, all right.
Notice I didn't call it a hearing.
Okay. I watched the presentation and it was just, you know, overview PowerPoint of what the project was. I'm like, you didn't tell me how, where the sidewalks, you know, you just put a drawing up. You didn't give me the details because I don't think they had them when they did this hearing. I think they were probably at a fifty percent design, maybe seventy-five percent.
Fifty's about right.
So anyhow.
Okay, that's for fifty-six.
So here are three decisions for lot six, lot seven, and lot nine. Uh, so it's the three separate state lots. Then the graduate stewardship board, I believe yesterday.
Basically all the same.
They are the same with the exception to the change of the references to the lot. There's also some of the particular findings of fact that is specific to each.
This is some of these, right?
Yeah, Dave, you sent this out.
You sent this out electronically.
Okay, I read this.
I looked it over.
I didn't have any comments.
I am no, no comments at all.
No. Because this is basically the one we just looked at for common driveway. Yeah. I was fine with this.
I didn't have to write it.
Yeah, the boilerplate was just fine for this one.
Is everybody happy with it?
Yeah.
These, these are all Turkey Hill Road.
So we basically just went through the bylaw with the sections when I read this and.
Yeah.
Put comments below it, so. Since we approved it, so we need a, we've already motioned to sign it, correct? This is just a.
No, we approved it. We do need a motion to sign the decision.
I'm motioned out for this meeting.
Yeah, me too.
Would anyone like, like to make a motion to sign the special permit decision?
Make a motion to sign the special permit decision motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? I see Kevin is still reading.
I'm, I'm good. I, I went through it earlier.
Is there any discussion? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You got the official one?
No, these are all individual.
And there are three decisions, because there are three lots that were subject to a state, to the state lots. Lots six, seven, and nine were each, the applicant saw it, a special permit for a state lot for those three lots. So therefore, there's a decision for each of those.
Okay. But we did the hearing on all this in conjunction, all three at the same time.
That's right. The hearing was all concurrently on the three state lots.
Yeah, we get to sign.
Pass all of them around.
Today's the fourteenth. I'll sign this one and swap it. And I saw our expeditious and efficient, uh, um, executive assistant has put through a stipend.
Yes.
Yes.
That had been reapproved from, from the citizen that suggested that at the town meeting. Wanted to make sure, citizen, not planning board member.
Well, I can say that it's, it's that time of year again where the budget's back to the official stipends of the budget officially.
Yeah, we, and I'll, uh, yeah, I'll get to the, talking to the chairman to get it back to what it was seven years ago. And let the, let the FICOM tell us no. We just cut them all again and then we wait to this, wait to the next town meeting to fix them. Because I think we've been more than generous by waiting almost ten years now to have our cut. I need to build that retirement fund too at the state level.
Wow.
Yeah. I just, I, I told Becky to put it all in, so I don't even see the check. It goes right into the O B R A or whatever it's called. So I'll get thirty-eight cents or maybe seventy-five when I retire. Enough to buy cream with the free coffee at McDonald's. The next one I read, which I think we already read, Britanelle Estates.
Okay, we had a decision with new subdivision modification on Britanelle Estates.
And that was for the.
The three things.
Okay. The, um.
Cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac.
Concrete pipe.
Changing it to H P or H D P. It was finally that.
Yeah, no islands. Oh, and the, the width, width of the road.
Oh, that was for the, the crossings. Yeah.
Anyone interested in looking at it before we take a motion to sign it.
And there was nothing mentioned in there at all about the rail trail?
No, that wasn't part of this decision. I think that's still open on the subdivision itself, but it wasn't part of this decision. That's what I looked for too.
Yeah.
I think that's Dick, to my point, it's still a negotiating topic.
I was going to say, did we verify where that was going to go and how it was supposed to be?
I don't think so. I don't think it's been finalized.
At some point, we're just sitting here saying, but draw a line and make that happen. Who knows it better than him?
Lee said he was going for it, right?
Yeah, absolutely said he was going to, yeah.
Yeah. That's why when I didn't see this decision, I was fine with the decision because that doesn't lock him in then. It's still negotiating.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I doubt it very much.
You don't think it's going to get done, Dick?
Not really.
Well, we have in the minutes.
Hopefully you guys will just remember, that's all.
No, my, my point is, I mean, he said he's going to do it. It's not getting done, so why don't we ask him in for the next meeting and ask for a status update? As part of the Britanelle Estates.
I feel that it's part of the condition was way back when, whatever, you know, to me for crying out loud, send out Tom Lassen. Figure it out. Then put it down on a piece of paper.
Well, that's what I was getting at. Have him in next time and ask him, or give him a heads up. I'm, I'm fine with that, that hey, the next meeting, we want to know the status of, of the, uh, of the rail tra- trail access that you discussed two meetings ago.
Requested a plan with that rail trail.
I like that even better. I like that even better. And then Dick, once that's in there, then we can, we can vote to accept it as a field change.
Yep.
And then it's in the plan. It was part of the.
To cover the special condition that said a long time ago.
That's my suggestion.
And seeing how Tamika's got it written down and all set.
Okay.
So I'll say on that, Dave, is your request to forward a copy of the plan showing the location of the connection to the rail trail. So nobody wants to look at this beforehand?
I read it. I have. I'm good.
Do I have a motion to sign the certificate of action?
I move that we, I make a motion that we sign the certificate of action.
For the Britanelle Estates.
For Britanelle Estates.
Modification.
Modification.
Suck on that.
Is there any discussion? Gary, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, at least we got them to do it ahead of time.
Yeah. I sure would still like to see that, uh, what's the place called on Britanelle that George Jonas' property, I'd like to see that modification.
Yeah.
We'll need a balloon test on that one.
Plenty of hot air over there. No problem.
Test ever going to take place?
Last thing I saw was, it was, um.
Saturday, but probably not Saturday because it's going to be bad weather, so.
I saw it was pushed off till January now?
No, that's the hearing.
Oh, okay.
And next we have a decision on site, plan review for the common driveway on Kenwood.
Yep. I'll just read that a moment.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Oh, this looks awfully familiar.
Was this Kenwood Court?
Yeah, Court and Drive.
Well.
Or is it?
Was this the one that was on the, it was Court one way and Drive the other, if I remember right?
So it'd be, so the lots themselves get their frontage from Kenwood Drive.
Correct.
The lots were sub, uh, not, the lots were split through A and R to create lots six, seven, and eight. With access from Kenwood Court for two of the lots and the common driveway coming from Kenwood Court. The frontage itself is Kenwood Drive. That's why the decision references it as such.
Yeah.
But this is the one that involves Walnut Street, Kenwood Court, and Kenwood Drive.
I'm sure that's right. It's, it's weird that the decision, the driveway is actually on Kenwood Court, but the decision is about Kenwood.
Because the frontage is from Kenwood Drive.
It doesn't matter where the driveway is, even though we're talking about.
Because the frontage has to originate in the area that is actual real frontage, which was determined to be the case here. And that it was. And that it was. It would involve wetlands and other issues, to actually use Kenwood Drive as a frontage.
Right, because it's all too wet down there by Walnut Street.
So they justified that in correspondence to the board.
Yeah, and they, and on the hearing, they did a great job of explaining it, too. I remember that, it was.
Anybody want to read this one over for?
Nope, read it already, God.
Gary wanted to find out where the road was and the right of way, and it was further away from his property, and he was happy, and that makes me happy.
Yep, I was good with this. The presentation was one of the better ones of answering a lot of questions, the engineering firm, so.
Except the motion to.
I just wish they were replacing the hay fence again, or something.
Sign the site plan review decision.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's almost as bad as when you get a subdivision plan idea and you gotta sign thirty-five pages.
Luckily, it's not a refinance, we can't assign that much paperwork. But as I told the wife, you're not gonna see a mortgage for two point five percent in your, in your lifetimes ever again. Things go bad, next couple of years, you'll be back to the seventies, where it's thirteen, fourteen percent for a mortgage.
Oh, and this one was at sixty-eight? About the first mortgage I ever got was. I don't remember exactly, but it was like three or four percent.
Yeah, Dad, he got ours in sixty-nine, and I think it was six, six point five or something.
Point eight for me, nineteen sixty-six, I think it was, when I got a mortgage.
Yeah, I remember him towards the nineties where it was getting paid off for the thirty years. It's like the interest is ridiculous. At the end of the year. Because back then, I think he paid for the house twenty-nine thousand dollars for a, uh. Twelve hundred square foot ranch. I always remember him saying, eh, I wish your mother would have been more aggressive and told me to get the basement. There's only three thousand dollars more back then. I could have put your kids down there and forgot about you. I can't. Oh, he, he was just joking, but it was one of those things that it had been a better storage and all that stuff, but. You know, when you're freshly married, three grand's a lot of money.
I think it was sixteen cents mortgage payment.
Jesus. I think Mom and Dad's was a couple hundred dollars.
Well.
And was with a, what do they call those banks, savings and loan? Savings and loan. And in the eighties, when they went under, they had to. The government grabbed them and then sold it off, so the mortgage is off.
I don't remember, I don't remember what the payment was, but I remember my husband's salary was eighty-two dollars a week.
My pops was making, because he worked International Harvester, and we had a little war going on then, over in Southeast Asia. So, International Harvester was making deuce and halves like drunk sailors, just pumping them out, overtime galore. So.
That was in nineteen sixty-one, I just figured it out.
Anyway, that's the end of our agenda. Unfortunately, what I wanted on the agenda was not put on.
Well, if it's within forty-eight hours, put it on right now.
What I brought up the meeting before and was supposed to go on, but it didn't, so. Screw it.
Is this the business meeting we need to do?
I don't, don't, don't care anymore.
Unfinished business is our agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Never finished.
Owing to the holidays, I am going to propose that we cancel the December twenty-eighth meeting.
I will second that. I will agree with that.
Hey, I don't, I don't know if that requires a vote or not.
I think it's just notice.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Well, I will notice that and be happy.
Can we, I agree with that. I just, I'm with Dick, I, I'm. This has gone on three years and we haven't had a bit, I mean, we tried to have a business meeting in twenty-twenty, but that stupid little virus thing sort of prevented it. I, I think we really need to schedule one at the beginning of the year. That's my opinion, just put it on the books, I don't know, second meeting in January. And just say it's a business meeting, and that's the. And then, on the first week of, the first meeting in January, let's come up with, uh, what topics we want to talk in the business meeting. You know, we want to pick two sections of the subdivision regs and go through those, try to clean them up, and then whatever else, like this. Take care of this item. That's my opinion, I don't know.
I know, I know I've seen it, I don't look at it.
It just. I think it's slow enough now. Especially in this winter, that we can have a decent business meeting, and maybe it takes two meetings, I don't know, but let's do it.
I would like to see fines. When things are, you know, things screw up on, on our end of it, for kind of loud.
Yeah, but we, and if I'm.
Somehow, I don't know, maybe, maybe, well, that's part of the business meeting, they have a discussion, those kind of things, and that's.
You mean fines for the board, I don't.
Fines for, you know, problems with the subdivision or.
Typically, haven't we done this, we, we can ask the building inspector to put a cease and desist on it before, and then get it corrected before they can move any farther? That's a pretty good fine, if it shuts them down from building and selling a house. I mean, I, I, I don't know. I don't want to be business and friendly, but if they make a mistake. The building inspector should get involved, from the house standpoint, if it's a road, that's us. I agree with you on that one.
I agree with you, the timing, it's a slow period.
Looking at this one, they continue to apply and evolve the town scenic road bylaws. We can't get through it in the ad hoc committee.
Yeah.
Wish we had worked on that for about, I don't know, must be four, five, six hours now.
That's a tough one, Norm, because there's so, what do you do? I mean.
There's so many of them.
It's Pandora's box, where do you open it up?
Yeah.
I mean, Rutland, the entire town's a scenic area. I mean, how, how do you pick and choose? I mean, if it's Worcester, you can pick sections, but Rutland. You've got the, you've got the state park, there was a barracks for the Revolutionary War. You've got Rufus Putnam all over the place. You've got the downtown area, I shouldn't say downtown, talking like it's a city, the center of town area. You've got Britnell and Sassamana that were Conestoga Trails out to the west. Where do you stop? What do you call?
Well, that's okay, we've got an economic development commission coming along, let's go.
Isn't there something else, Norm, I saw, too, there's another commission that's being formed. Solar study or something, or was that appointing somebody to the solar?
Yeah, that was just applying an R and G rap to.
Oh, okay, alright. Then I did see the economic, and I'm like. I thought with, with Dave, you know, I'm on with Dave with the, um. What do you call it, a group that we're doing? Uh, I'm having a brain death, there was a center.
Master Plan.
Master Plan. Wouldn't the Master Plan take care of some of the economic issues? I, maybe I'm wrong.
The Master Plan is just a plan.
Okay.
It isn't something, you know, there are gonna be action items in it.
Okay.
But the Master Plan Committee won't be taking any action.
No, but still, there are action items in it.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, I just, I, I, again, this is me. Getting, and, and I've said this to Ron personally, getting people to get on boards and commissions is tough. And if we keep building them, you're, you're diluting, in my mind, the town.
Right now, I think there's so many committees and everything else that are going on, and does, does everybody know what's going on?
No. Man, I just.
Is a limited pool of talent.
Yeah.
And willingness.
Yeah, the willingness.
In the town, the sun. And. I don't see that changing.
Right.
It was brought up not that long ago, I think, at a selectmen's meeting, and about the librarian wanted to get together and have the town committees and everything else. And have the people come in and see what the con con, what they're about.
Do presentations and teach people in town what we do, yeah.
They come in, and this is what we do, but, so. How do you, you know, show people unless you do it? You could talk about it all day long, for kind of, but it doesn't do a bit of good until you get your hands dirty, get, get in here and talk to people.
Wouldn't that be a good tie-in for town government with the three-hundredth?
Oh, of course, and especially if we get that, we, we, we did get that, uh, from Smithsonian, that's coming here in the library. Prior to that, wouldn't it be nice to have a lot of, uh.
I mean, you don't have to have it long, you just do a couple, like, Dave's done recent brief PowerPoint presentations, just do a couple slides. This is the con con, this is what they do, this is what they're responsible for, if you want to get involved, please contact the chairman. Just a, a quick overview. The planning board, we have a, a bylaw subcommittee, love to have people join that, because right now, it's all of us and Bonnie. We have, we don't, I mean, I know, I think we've got some coming up we need to review. And that's maybe something at the business meeting, we come up with an agenda for Maryland to help you. Here's four bylaws, let's, let's come up with you coming up, let's do a precedent of what we need to attack first.
You mean the noise one, that was, whatever happened to that?
That was nineteen eighteen, according to the paperwork, I was just looking at.
Noise bylaw, oh, man. Anyhow.
So anyways.
Is there anything else to come before the board?
I don't know, Tamika wants to go home, so, move to adjourn.
I want to, to ask Kevin if, uh, Kevin, if you were. If you understood why you weren't told that your name was gonna be on the board. You don't understand, I forgot how I answered. The board, technically, we can't talk about anything outside of the board, outside of the meetings here. Tim. Had a, the idea that maybe we needed to look.
Yes, I fully understand, if I could just, the Attorney General very specifically highly recommends.
Right?
That I be notified.
Of course.
This board doesn't.
Of, could I finish? Doesn't look like it's gonna do any good.
We already did this two weeks ago.
The, I didn't think you were listening to me then.
Well, you were too busy mocking me.
Mocking you? No, I was angry. I was getting very pissed.
Well, you were mocking me.
No, when I was, when I go like this, ask my.
You absolutely imitated me and mocked me in the meeting.
You go and ask my children and my stepchildren.
Watch the video.
What I do when I'm angry, and they will tell you. And then if I start humming, I'm really angry.
Good to know.
What I would just like to tell you, just one thing, if you could hear me out. The board can, can discuss. Whether or not we need to take action on something, and that's all it was, and Tim was concerned that. We, he was concerned that he wanted to have.
Okay.
He was, he wanted to look at the bylaws.
Here we go.
To see if we needed to put you on the gen- agenda, and the same thing with Mr. Schultz who was.
Okay.
And if, if anybody, we do that, and that if anybody. If, if this answer is yes, we need to address this, then you notify the person to come in.
I'm, I'm not gonna do this, are we good?
That's all.
Second? Adjourned, thank you.
That's all I wanted to say.
Well, it's the same thing we already said, it's, I don't agree at all. Can I leave?
Yeah.
Yeah. Undebatable.
Yeah, we'll be back eventually, so if we put this up on the agenda, come on. Enjoy.